Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Special Planning Commission for September 24, 2020. If you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the real public.
To you, fans.
Our God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for all.
All right, good morning. Mr. Rutledge, are you on?
Yes, Mr. Chair, to your great joy, I'm sure.
No comment. All right, let's see, I'm trying to find my agenda. All right, the, Mr. What's, are there any clarifications or additional information this morning?
My own, hello? Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have five additional public comment letters that have been handed out and will be made part of the record.
Very good, thank you. Ms. Schenk, anything?
Nothing further.
Nothing further, very good, thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and open this up for public comment, and this is an opportunity for folks to speak on items that are not on today's agenda. If you wish to speak on the item we have today, you'll have an opportunity when that application's being heard. But again, this is just for items not on today's agenda. So is there anybody who wishes to come forward and make a comment or statement? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we're going to close public comment, and we're going to go on to the advertised hearing for Peak Development Rezone, but this is a quasi-judicial hearing, which requires that if you intend to speak at all, you need to be sworn in. So if you would, please rise to be sworn in. This includes neighbors and citizens in general.
Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and factual representations which you're about to present to the Planning Commission will be truthful and accurate? Thank you.
All right, very good. All right, just little housekeeping items. We've got microphones on both sides, on both ends of the rooms. If you speak, after you speak, one of the staff folks will come up and clean the area prior to the next person coming up. So please just give them a little bit of room to do that prior to speaking. All right, with that, we're going to go ahead and open up the hearing for Peak Development Rezone. Mr. Wenzel, would you please read the item into the record, please?
Yes, sir. Item number two, Z20-10, Peak Development Rezone, estate of Walter Schmidt Jr., Ida Schmidt Thomas Revocable Trust Owner, SRQ300 LLC, contract purchaser, PLN 2006-0021, and Jake Bibler is the planner. This is a rezone of approximately 282.3 acres from A1 Agricultural Suburban, and 226.2 acres of heavy, I'm sorry, 282.3 acres from A1 Agricultural Suburban, 226.2 acres, and HM Heavy Manufacturing, 56.1 acres, to the LM Light Manufacturing Zoning District, part of a 301.5 acre site, and 19.2 acres are zoned LM, generally located west of US 301 from University Parkway to Talavast Road, and commonly known as 2400 Talavast Road Sarasota. And Caleb Grimes is the applicant.
Very good, thank you. With that, I'd like to ask if any of the Planning Commissioners have had any expartie communications regarding this application?
No, sir.
Okay, very good, thank you. Let the record show, no expartie communications. And if we could, Mr. Grimes, if you could, please introduce your application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Caleb Grimes. I'm with the law firm of Grimes, Hawkins, Gladefelter, and Galvano. I have with me today Mr. Kyle Grimes also, and we're going to double team a little bit up here, and I have been sworn. I am pleased to be here today representing Peak Development Partners LLC, who you see as the contract purchaser for this particular tract. The principals are Mr. Steve Racine and Mr. Roy Dickey, both of whom are with us today, and you'll hear from Mr. Racine about what they have in mind in a few minutes. It had been my pleasure to work with both of them in the past in a very similar light manufacturing project within Lakewood Ranch that they were the developers of, and that has been very successful. And so it has been really good to be able to work with them and to go forward with them on this particular project. We also have with us Mr. Steve Henry, who is a traffic engineer and an expert in traffics, if we have any question about transportation issues. Today, what we have is a straight rezone. It is a rezone to bring this entire tract of 301 plus or minus acres into the LM category, which is light manufacturing. If you, if we can go to the document cam. Have we gotten, oh, I'm sorry, I thought I would see it on here. Okay, thank you. This is a fairly close-up of the site, and as you can see, the north is to the top, and along the north property line is Talavast Road. You can see, kind of highlighted, to the east is US 301. And at the south end of the property, there's some development, but also University Parkway is the road down on the south end. On the east is generally a railroad, excuse me, on the west is generally a railroad track. If we can go to the next one. This is zooming out a little bit so that you can see where the property lies in relation to the rest of the area, in the South County area. You see the airport over to the west, and you see various development within the, can you get it? No, the other way was fine. Oh, I see, it was doing something crazy. There we go. So this is it from a larger area. The next map I want to show you is the comp plan, land use designation for this particular property. And if we can zoom out just a little bit so that we can get the whole thing in. What you can see is this property has two land use designations on it. The dark area to the south, down near University Parkway, is, ah, thank you. The dark area to the south is IH, or industrial heavy. That's the land use designation for this property. The rest of it, which is in more of a gray area, is IL, or industrial light designation. So this particular property has two comp plan designations that are over it. You can see that it is surrounded by IL, IH, and in the northwest area, an area of residential, Res 6. And now if I can go to the current zoning map, which is why when you heard it read in, the area that we are rezoning is not exactly equal to the area of the entire property. If you can look at this, and I'm going to step over here and hopefully can still be heard. I don't know if, will I stay on the mic? Okay, he can point it out. If you look at this particular map, a large part of the area is zoned A1 agriculture. All of the area in green is zoned agriculture. There's a portion down to the south that is zoned heavy manufacturing, or heavy industrial property. And then if you see further to the south, there are two sections, both to the west and to the east, that have light industrial zoning already, light manufacturing, LM zoning. And then there's an area to the northwest that if you can see it, it's almost like a flag lot looking, it is zoned LM. And so what we are doing is looking to bring to you a site that has mixed zoning on it and bring it under one zoning category, consistent with the comprehensive plan of IL and IH, one zoning category of LM light manufacturing. We had met, Mr. Racine, Mr. Dickey and I, and Mr. Grimes, and all of us had met and talked on what is the best zoning designation for this area based on the comprehensive plan. And we did choose to make it and bring to you a zoning category that was all the same, or light manufacturing. Two of the areas, or three of the areas, I guess you would say, were already zoned light manufacturing. But we looked at the location in general, and I want to tell you a few things about this location. The southern part, where the heavy industrial and the light manufacturing is, is in the entranceway. And you know, we want the entranceway to look good, we want things to be appropriate. It's a special area for this county. And so we took that into account when we were looking at doing a light manufacturing over the whole site instead of heavy manufacturing. The site is on a major thoroughfare, US 301. And that US 301 is a limited access thoroughfare, and it is a major roadway to get north-south, get down to the, down or up to the major roads that go on out to the interstate. And so, again, we took that into account. And we decided that, in part because it was also, well, and as you saw, it's near the airport. So we are in the, in part, in the airport protection area for noise and things like that. So we felt like the appropriate use for it was LM, again, consistent with the comprehensive plan. And in looking at it, and in part because we were near some residential in the northwest area, we felt that the light manufacturing made the most sense. Our county, and you know, you hear light industrial, but it's a little bit of a misnomer. It's called light manufacturing, but what it is, and our county has gone to great lengths to assure that our LM and our light industrial uses are compatible with the areas in which they stand. For example, in 531.25, our comp plan says, "Light industrial uses shall not create any adverse impacts on adjacent or nearby residential uses." And we have put a lot of things into our code. We have a whole section on adverse impact performance standards that have to be met to assure that the development will be conducted in a manner to cause any, so that we don't cause any form of environmental pollution or affect the surrounding environment. "Any use shall not admit dangerous, noxious, injurious, or otherwise objectionable fire explosion, radioactive, or other hazard, noise, or vibration, smoke, dust, odor, or other form of environmental pollution, electrical, or other disturbance." And we can't, this goes on, and we have built that into our code so that we do that. We also have something special in our LM category that is in place and will have to be done, is that if LM is adjacent to residential, it requires some extra special buffers and setbacks. It actually requires a 30-foot buffer, and that 30-foot buffer requires, not your standard landscaping and buffering, but actually requires a six-foot opaque wall with all of the landscaping placed on the outside of the wall. So you end up with a very nice buffer between anything that can't have an adverse impact anyway, and the surrounding area. And so we looked at all of these issues, and we felt like that the highest and best use, or the best use under all of the circumstances, was to do away with the heavy industrial, make it all light manufacturing. And the purpose of light manufacturing is generally what you would call warehousing, research and development, assembly, and things like this that are very, very low impact. One other thing that we talked to Mr. Henry about, our traffic engineer, and discussed, and have found is that the same square footage of light industrial generates far less traffic than the same square footage of commercial, for example. And so it makes it where you have less impact on the road system. So with all that in mind, we came up with and think that this site is appropriate for light manufacturing. And I can't stress enough, looking at your comprehensive plan, that clearly says this is an IL and IH area, not appropriate for residential, for example, and that is why we're here. I want to just take a moment and explain why we have a special Planning Commission meeting today. Due to what's going on in the world today, and places out in the public not set up as beautifully as this is to take care of social distancing and issues relative to COVID, we chose not to have a standard neighborhood meeting. And what we did is we sent out, we got all the addresses of all the neighbors near us and sent out a letter inviting them to contact us so that we could explain the project. We got the addresses, sent it all out in advance of your normal public notice. And the public notice went out with the advertising labels from the property appraiser's office. It went to the neighbors, and they saw that for the first time because we didn't realize that their addresses are all post office boxes and not the actual addresses. So what we did is we asked you, and I appreciate your doing this, you extended this meeting for two weeks, to allow us to have a neighborhood meeting, which we did conduct last, a week ago via Zoom. Mr. Steve Henry was present, answered, tried to explain what the project was so that everyone knew, and there was additional time for them to get there. And so with that in mind, I'd like to bring Mr. Henry up, Mr. Henry, Mr. Racine up. Got my two Steves here, get my mind all mixed up here.
Good morning.
My name is Steve Racine. I'm a partner of Peak Development Partners. I have been sworn in. I'd like to take a minute just to give you a brief overview of who Peak Development Partners is, a little bit of a past project, overview of past projects we were involved in, and then tell you a little bit about what we have planned for the site. As I mentioned, Peak Development Partners is a private investment and development firm located in Tampa. My partners and I have a combined experience of just over 60 years and have been involved in a little over 10 million square feet of light industrial distribution, e-commerce, and manufacturing development. As Caleb had mentioned, we most recently were involved in a project over in Lakewood Ranch, which was a 514,000-square-foot multi-building, multi-tenant development, industrial development located within the master plant community. The immediate surrounding area to the east and to the south directly, abutting the property, was a combination of single-family homes and then single-family for rent product that's being developed right now. As Caleb had mentioned, it's a light industrial project that we developed over there that had a myriad of uses. It was assembly, research and development, some distribution, a little bit of manufacturing. But the point, the reason I bring that up is it was an industrial project, light industrial project, where we have a similar circumstance where there's residential immediately abutting it. And we were cognizant when we developed that project to make sure that we had appropriate buffers, and took into account how the buildings were constructed, the aesthetics, the landscaping, things of that nature. The project that we're requesting the rezone on is going to be similar in nature as it's developed through its phases. The first section of the project that will be developed is a 55-acre parcel at the northeast corner of the site that is just directly to the west of 301 and due south of Talavast. In that section, there's going to be a Fortune 100 distribution company that'll be building a building that's just over, slightly over 200,000 square feet. That'll be the first tenant that goes into the park. The remainder of the project, we're going to be developing in phases, and it's our intent. The first section that more than likely will be developed is to the east. There's a power line that bifurcates the site from Talavast down to University. The first section that we'll be developing in will be on the east side of that power line. And that'll be a mixture of buildings, or what we at least have intended for the site, is a mixture of buildings, similar to what we built, not identical, but similar to what we built in Lakewood Ranch. There'll be similar uses, uses that don't have objectionable or adverse impact to the immediate area. Once again, assembly, research and design, biotech and life sciences, distribution, e-commerce, things of that nature are what we intend for that section of the project. And that will also carry down throughout the, what I'm going to refer to as the third phase, which is the segment of the site that's down to the south that currently abuts the heavy manufacturing that's shown on the screen now. We're also, as we develop through the project, we intend to build a, what we refer to as a spine road that's going to begin, point of orientation is at the north section of the site, right in the middle of, if I can point to this without, at the upper section of Talavast, and that road is intended to continue down all the way to University. And it's also our intent to try to endeavor to work with Florida Department of Transportation to also obtain access to US 301. The reason I'm mentioning that, we're cognizant of traffic. The first phase of the project at the northeast corner, the bulk of that traffic is going to use Talavast heading to the east, and then using US 301 to head north to Hillsborough and then south to other counties, in other areas of Manatee and Sarasota County, for that matter. The spine road that we're developing will serve the rest of the project. Obviously, there will still be an access point up at that northeast corner, but it's our intent, once again, to alleviate congestion and to give people, both employees and tenants in the park, the ability to access other means of ingress and egress throughout the park itself. The area to the northwest portion of the site will be the last section that we develop. We don't have an intent immediately to put anything in that vicinity, but as Caleb mentioned, there's a setback of 75 feet and also a 30-foot landscape buffer that we have to adhere to, and that's similar to what we had over in Lakewood Ranch. There's clearly residential in that area. We intend to be down in this area, developing this project for many, many years, and as such, we want to be good neighbors. We want to make sure that what we do, we're very respectful, and we're taking into account the fact that we do have residents and residential abutting us. That's, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just briefly, kind of in conclusion here. As you can see, we are in a very developed area of the county. We are within the urban service area. And the comp plan clearly calls for this type of zoning for the site. We think we're very consistent with the comp plan. I appreciate a very extensive staff report that was put together. It's very all-inclusive explaining this. And just to understand that light manufacturing, this type of development, is always considered an economic engine, economic development, they're considered job creators. I do work all over the state, and it's amazing, all of the larger developments all want to have a light industrial component that's in the have a light industrial component that's associated with the rest of their development to be able to have job creation and to be able to have a place for the people who live in and around the area to work. And just to call attention to a couple of points in your staff report under the compliance with the comprehensive plan, the first two points I think are very telling. The one is to promote development in currently undeveloped areas which have the greatest level of public facility availability and investment. We have water, we have sewer, we have major roads, we have an airport. This is the area where you want to promote this. And then the other one is encourage growth and development to concentrate within the urban service area. And we are within the urban service area. So I think this is a very simple rezone. The site is appropriate for this use and really no other, and we request that you recommend this rezoning to LM, to the county commissioners. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Grimes, I do have a question regarding the appropriateness of the proposed zoning. One of the things you mentioned in your introduction was the airport overlay.
Yes.
With regard to the airport overlay, does that restrict certain uses within the property that has the overlay?
The answer is yes, it can restrict uses, but it does not restrict light manufacturing. It can restrict height in portions of it, but the light manufacturing is one that you want in the overlay district, which is why you see so much of it in this area and around it. The, in your staff report, you'll see that there's a reference to the airport's comments on it and so forth.
Right. The question I have is, you know, we start off with the uses that would be allowed under the future land use category, and there may be certain ones that are not appropriate and removed from the potential as due to the airport overlay. And is it correct that the number or the potential uses get smaller and smaller with restrictions such as that due to the proximity of the airport?
Mr. Chairman, the answer in general is yes. I have not done an analysis of exactly what you could not have there, but for example, in the heavy manufactured area where it's already zoned that, that's an area where you can have things like stacks, smoke stacks. And you cannot have that in the LM, and that would probably be a problem in the airport overlay because of the flight issue. But I've not done an exact analysis of exactly what you can and can't have, but I know that they, for example, are in some of these overlay, in the overlay areas, they try to restrict homes and some of those kinds of uses.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you. Any additional questions, Mr. Roth?
Good morning, Mr. Grimes.
Good morning, Mr. Roth.
One quick question. Is it, is it your client's intent to basically keep this as a clean, light industry, light manufacturing type facilities on this property?
That's the purpose of the rezone to LM because under our code, our requirements are that they be the light, non-objectionable, no adverse impact industry. And the intent is to have, as Mr. Racine said, the warehousing, research and development, assembly type uses. The very first one that is going through the process now is for a warehouse distribution center. So the answer is that's why we're asking to rezone it to this and get away from the part to the south from heavy manufacturing that would not necessarily be the clean industrial use.
Well, you understand that my concern is, is what's happened in the past in Talavast, what's gone on in that neighborhood with different industries being there and with the citizens of Talavast have gone through. So, yeah, in fact, I mean, I like the project, but if they can keep it clean, that'd be great.
Well, the answer is that is absolutely the intent, but it's also required by your code. If you, if you look at the overhead, you will see that the rez six section is an area where the, as you mentioned, the Talavast people have had some, I think, for lack of a better word, we're kind of wrong with what happened with some environmental issues that took place in that area. And that was from some more heavy industrial type uses. And we are not proposing any of those uses, and that's why we're keeping it to the LM and actually getting away from the HM in the area. The county code and comprehensive plan, we believe assures the compatibility between that kind of clean industrial use and residential between no adverse impacts specifically to residential properties and a list of things that go on, as well as the additional buffers and setbacks that would be required in LM, but not necessarily required in other designations.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Roth?
This, if I'm not mistaken, was designated a brownfield some time ago? Is that correct? Mr. Grimes?
I don't know if it was specifically designated a brownfield, but it is an area in which there was a plume of environmental problem in the area that is being reviewed and mitigated and followed as we speak. Part of that plume migrated onto the northeast, northwest portion of this site itself, and we are cognizant of it and we are doing nothing to cause any disturbance of it or to interfere with any monitoring wells or any things that have been going on. And so, it is being closely monitored by the state and others.
Does that prevent us from building things on the property?
No, it just, and again, the area is, it's a small part of the property. We are, we are actually not planning on building in there till long, long later phases.
That's a little gray piece on the...
Can you point at the map again? The overhead wasn't up yet.
Okay.
Yeah. And we are, we are not planning on doing that in the early phases at all. It'll be much longer once we are, we'd like to see that it all is eventually cleaned up. However, we have actually received notification that we can build on it, we just can't, you know, drop wells, we can't dig down below 20 feet, we could put buildings on it. It is, it is allowed.
Okay, so in essence, what you're saying is you could put a concrete slab down of X number of feet, which would prevent whatever is below, which is contaminated apparently, to rise up into the building or its area and be a problem for humankind?
I guess you could do that, but we have no indication that there's anything rising up that would cause that.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to clarify here. Mr. Grimes is not a environmental expert here. We do have our in-house county environmental expert available during staff presentation to answer questions on these issues.
Is that person in?
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Yes, they will do it during staff presentation.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All right. Mr. Grimes, related to some of the testimony you just gave, you said you received notification. What was the form of notification you received?
Just give me a second, I'll get the letter.
Thank you.
underlying this address. Says Lockheed Martin is currently conducting groundwater remediation in the Talavast area. This remediation includes an annual groundwater sampling event to document the horizontal and vertical extent of the groundwater contamination. This sampling has confirmed that the groundwater underlying the northern portion of the property located at 1950 Talavast Road with the parcel number is contaminated with chlorinated, volatile organic compounds, CVOCs. This CVOC contamination is present in the lower portion of the surficial aquifer and the upper portion of the intermediate aquifer, approximately 25 to 150 feet below ground surface. Based on the depth of the groundwater contamination in this area, the contamination poses very little risk to the development as long as there is no groundwater extraction from the lower portion of the surficial aquifer or the upper portion of the intermediate aquifer. In addition, the development activities pose very little risk to the groundwater remediation as long as excavation work does not exceed, extend below approximately 20 feet below ground surface. I'll go ahead and introduce that.
Thank you.
And for you. Because we know that there is some groundwater contamination beneath a small portion of this site, Mr. Racine was very interested in making sure and finding out what it meant. And that is, that is what we have gotten from Lockheed Martin that is doing all of the remediation and the work.
Okay, that's very helpful. I was hoping to understand who was the responsible party for cleanup, so obviously it's Lockheed Martin.
Correct.
And then just one final clarification, it may have been stated, but to ensure we understand completely, the actual source of contamination is off-site. This is a plume or cloud of contamination that originated off-site.
Off-site.
And has traveled into the property.
Yes, it traveled, and as was indicated earlier, it traveled under many of the homes of the people in the neighborhood and was a horrible thing for them. And I, you know, it needs to have work on it, but it really doesn't affect what we're asking for today. That is something that needs to be done, needs to be continued, taken care of for those people, and I agree with that completely. But what we're doing is not going to cause that, intensify that, or cause a problem with it, and we are looking for a light manufacturing that is a no adverse impact kind of use that is consistent with our comprehensive plan.
Very good, thank you. All right. Any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, very good, thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and go to the staff presentation. So who's up first, Mr. Bibbler?
For Building and Development Services, and I have been sworn in.
Thank you.
We do have a PowerPoint presentation. Peak Development Rezone, Z2010. The general site location is along US 301 from Talavast Road to University Parkway in the southern portion of Manatee County. The request is to rezone a total of 282.3 acres of a 301.5 acre site. The existing zoning is suburban agriculture, 226.2 acres, heavy manufacturing of 56.1 acres, and light manufacturing of 19.2 acres. The future land use on the site is industrial light primarily with industrial heavy to the southern portions. Portions of the site are also in the coastal planning area. The entirety of the site is in the airport impact overlay and a small portion is in the airport impact height overlay. That's an overlay district that restricts the height of buildings. The adjacent future land use categories in the northwest corner is residential six, and then the majority of the surrounding areas are industrial light and industrial heavy with the same overlay districts as the subject site. The current zoning of the site is primarily suburban agriculture and to the southern portion is heavy manufacturing. There are pockets of light manufacturing, as the applicant pointed out, and a portion of the site is in the university parkway entranceway. The adjacent areas have primarily heavy manufacturing and light manufacturing. There is planned development mixed use, which is the Sarasota Bradenton Airport properties. There is residential, single-family, four and a half dwelling units per acre and residential duplex district, four and a half units per acre. And those are to the northwest of the subject site. The surrounding development, you can see there are some facilities. It's a little difficult for me to read, so I'm going to turn around and look at the larger screen. The Lockheed Martin development is to the northwest portion. You can see that here. There is some residential development here, again, on the northwest corner. The Manatee County transit facility is to the north across Talavast Road. Of course, Sarasota Bradenton Airport is quite noticeable. There is a waste facility, some indoor/outdoor storage. This is Chris Craft and Sun Hydraulics down here. The rest is some mixed light industrial uses. Site designs for the light manufacturing zoning district, minimum setbacks are 25 or 20 feet. That's for single-family residential uses, which are allowed. Residential uses are allowed, one unit per acre in light manufacturing, or one, excuse me, one unit per parcel. There being three parcels, this would be a maximum of three residential units developed here. Rear, 20 feet. There's no minimum yard required if abutting a railroad track, which extends the entire western portion of this parcel. So if the railroad track is used for the transportation of products and material to and from the site, then that is applicable. The side setbacks are 20 feet. The same railroad setback applies there, eight feet for single-family uses. Site constraints, the FAR is limited by the future land use categories. For both future land use categories that cover this site, that is a 0.75 floor area ratio, which would provide a total possible square footage of 9,850,005 square feet of commercial space. For hotels or mixed use development, the FAR is 1.0, which would provide for a possibility of 13,133,340 square feet. The height limitation is four stories. There are some open space requirements. In general, the land, the light manufacturing zoning district requires 15% open space, but for the areas located in the entranceway, that increases to 20%. And for the areas in the coastal overlay district is 30%. A few more site details. Again, I'll turn around just so I can better see this. What's difficult to read here is that this points out a required 75-foot setback and 30-foot buffer along in light manufacturing when adjacent to residential zoning districts. And as Mr. Grimes pointed out, there's also a requirement for a six-foot opaque wall. The positives of this proposed zoning would be that it would unify the zoning for the entire subject site and provide consistency for future development on that site. It would provide for a logical expansion of the off-site adjacent light manufacturing zoning districts, and light manufacturing is consistent with the industrial light and industrial heavy future land use categories. Negative, the, there are some intense non-residential uses that are permitted in the industrial light and light, the industrial light future land use category and the light manufacturing zoning district. Those are subject to, and the subject site is adjacent to residential properties, which may be affected. may be affected. Mitigating measures for those, the Land Development Code requires, as pointed out, a 75-foot building setback for any development in the L M zoning district when adjacent to single-family residential, and it requires that 30-foot buffer, as mentioned. We do find it to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code, this request, and staff does recommend approval.
Thank you very much. I have a question for you. You mentioned that there were some uses in L M that, I'm not sure exactly how you described it, but they would be less attractive adjacent to residential. I'm not sure. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you indicated that there may be uses that aren't necessarily appropriate.
Well, I believe that I used the words more intensive.
Okay, yes.
Than what the current zoning is in A1. Not that they would not be appropriate.
Right.
The Land Development Code does have those mitigating measures, as mentioned, but they are more intensive than what the current zoning would allow.
So regarding the more intensive uses under that zoning and the mitigation measures that would be in place to, I guess, evaluate or maybe mitigate those uses, what would the process be? Is it still administrative? Or are there special approvals needed? What's in place to mitigate?
Yes, Section 531 of our Land Development Code does go over special criteria for certain uses that are allowed in zoning districts. I took a quick look at the use chart in non-residential zoning districts. There was, out of 161 uses outlined in that chart, there are, 78% of them have specific criteria for development. So, and generally speaking, those are the ones that are more intensive. They would be required to meet that certain criteria for development that's in the Land Development Code that goes beyond what would otherwise be allowed.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Thank you. Any additional questions for staff? I would like to get some information regarding the contamination plume and how, you know, the process is currently in place to mitigate.
Sure. I will defer that to Mr. Rob Brown, who is the manager of our Environment Protection Division. He's approaching the mic and the mic.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Can I ask one question before he leaves?
Mr. Etlidge, yes.
I just wanted to confirm. I see generally through the report, but the planned development, as it's envisioned at least, there are enough utility services, you know, power, water, available to support the volume that they intend to put there. Yes or no?
The concurrency is deferred for this application until site plan approval. It's concurrency is something that will be reviewed at the time of site plan. But generally speaking, there is county services provided to this parcel, and it does seem that it would be adequate.
Okay, that's good enough. I just want to know generally that we're not in some of these areas where we just don't, we have older systems, or it's not reached there yet, or something like that. Okay, generally, we think so.
Just to follow up on Mr. Etlidge's questions, should it be determined that during the development that maybe water's not sufficient, or sewer, or the roadway network, what is, what's going to be the process to mitigate or correct that?
Sure. Those, the obligation to improve those is placed on the applicant at the time of site plan. So if there are deficiencies, the applicant would be required to work with the county to improve those.
So with regard to that, and I guess Mr. Gersonberger can provide an opinion also, or Mr. Galeano, but should the roadway network be insufficient and not meet the concurrency, then the applicant's responsibility is to provide improvements consistent with what the county would expect?
Allow Mr. Galeano to...
Or sewer, or water, any of those elements that we typically review for concurrency.
...transportation planning, and I have been sworn. Yes, you are correct. It means the purpose of the final site plan is to evaluate any impact at different type of infrastructures and identify the mitigation strategies to, for this type of impacts in terms of utilities, in terms of sewer, roads, schools, fire department, electricity, and everything that is related with the development.
And those costs for those improvements, those are wholly bore by the applicant?
If the impact is site-related, it means by the applicant, it should be mitigated by the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Gersonberger, yes?
For the record, Thomas Gersonberger, Public Works Department, I have been sworn. Mr. Chair, fellow commissioners, first off, good morning.
Good morning.
With respect to utility infrastructure, there is available water mains along both Talavas Road and University Parkway to serve this rezone application. And in addition, there are sanitary sewer force mains that are also available for proposed development of this project. Those proposed force mains are available along Talavas Road and University Parkway as well.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Mr. Brown, good morning.
For the record, my name is Rob Brown with Parks and Natural Resources Department, Environmental Protection Division, and I have been sworn available to answer any questions you have regarding the remediation that's being done there.
Very good. Thank you. I just want to get a little bit of an idea of, even though it's outside of this application of boundary, it is affecting the boundary with the plume. And I, as I understand it, the county, I'm sorry, the owner of the property, the responsible party, Lockheed Martin, is working with the county, and I presume they're working with the E P, the state, also on the mitigation plan. And I just want to understand what the county's role is with regard to either the monitoring or the mitigation plan.
Okay. The county really doesn't have a role right now. It has been designated by the state, D E P, and in partnership with Lockheed Martin and his consultants, basically have control of that area. And it's not just this property, it's the entire community. And what they have done is, back in 2009, they've got an approval for a treatment system out there. What happened is that there's some solvents, organic solvents, that leaked into the groundwater system from the plant at 1600 and other areas. And they're both what we call floaters and sinkers. There's solvents that are lighter than water and solvents that are heavy in water. So what happens, it, when it goes down there, it spreads both laterally and vertically. And there's different contaminants of concern in different zones in the system here. But just to give you an idea of the breadth, this may be hard to see, but that's the monitoring network that they have in this community. Oops, sorry, I'm side down. 301, Talavas. So they consist of both groundwater monitoring wells, groundwater recovery wells, horizontal wells, and then right there, the original plant site, 1600, is the treatment system. So basically, what they're doing is through this network of wells, they're pulling the water to the plant, and they're treating the water. Some of it then is going to our county P O T W. Some of it is going back into the groundwater system after it's been cleaned to try to push everything towards those collection points. So as indicated in the letter from Lockheed Martin to the property owners, is that they do have control of the site given by D E P. They don't want anything interrupting the process. So we can't put, you know, competing wells in there that would be drawing water away from their collection systems and deep stormwater systems. 20 feet shouldn't have any impact on their collection system. So again, it's a process of being able to collect the water, effectively treat it, put it back in the system. Again, we don't want drawdown in those areas, so it's kind of a recycling process. So, you know, development, there is not a problem to do surface development on these properties. And as you can see, the community is already there, has to deal with these issues as far as accommodating these wells and treatment system.
Very good. And you mentioned a P O T W. What is that?
Our publicly, our treatment, wastewater treatment plant.
So it's sent to the wastewater treatment plant for further treatment?
Some of it, some of it, and once it meets our criteria for accepting it in our wastewater treatment plant, some of the treated water is going to our wastewater treatment plant. And again, some of it is put back into the system to keep, you know, while there's some wetlands out there, we don't want to dehydrate the wetlands, and to keep the water being pushed back into the collection points. So we don't want to create a void.
Okay, very good. In my experience, when there are areas that have plumes and things, you know, ground contamination, sometimes there are restrictive covenants put over the property required by D E P. Does this property have a restrictive covenant?
I don't believe there are any restrictive covenants at that, you know, at this site. Historically, we were looking at putting restrictions and overlay in the entire region. That never happened. So again, as they go through and develop the property, SWIFTMUD is aware of the issues here. Of course, D E P is aware of the issue, so any permits that they would be receiving from those entities would take into consideration, you know, the conditions, the current conditions. And what I want to say is, it's always, you know, it's a long-term process. They've shown over the years that the concentration levels are continuously decreasing. So it's just a matter of time before they get down to a levels, which is the states establish some groundwater cleanup target levels. So that's their goal, is to get below those groundwater cleanup target levels.
So the Water Management District would be the entity that would enforce something, for example, if the project were approved for construction, and they go in and one of the things they would do would be dewatering for deep sewer installations, gravity sewer, then the Water Management District would provide a conditions or restrictions that would prevent the discharge of any water pulled from the ground, just being surface discharged? Do we know if that's the case?
I don't know whether SWIFTMUD would be doing, I mean, through ERP process, where they would need a, for example, our, before the county's transportation facility to the north there, the property was being developed, and the two considerations there were a well and a stormwater pond.
Right.
And again, the stormwater pond was designed to be, you know, larger surface and not as deep. Those are the considerations. You could put a well out there if you absolutely had to. Very expensive. We have a deep well in the northeast corner that was done years ago, but it is, you know, double-cased, and it's down to the Florida and Aquifer beyond, below any of the contamination.
Right. I would think that would be something that may be necessary to follow up on is during, like, construction, the things that are less likely to be observed or monitored that are temporary for construction, how those issues are handled if you do surface water, I mean, dewatering for construction, and you have a surface water discharge, what happens to that water? Is there any monitoring or mitigation or programs in place, best management practices that would avoid moving contamination? So...
Again, I hope that, you know, again, our comment is to work with Lockheed Martin and its contractor, which is Tetra Tech. If there's any dewatering on site...
I'm referring to this property. Lockheed Martin's not going to be involved in the construction of it, but...
I think they may be involved because there are, there's infrastructure on this property that is...
Monitoring wells and...
And recovery wells that belong to Lockheed Martin. And again, our recommendation is through the development process, right now, I know it's no, there's no project on the books, but through the development phase of any project, coordinate with Lockheed Martin and its consultants. They have their own 811 system. You know, if anybody's digging there or doing anything, we need to notify them first to make sure that there's no interference with their infrastructure. But, and again, like I said, the system is dynamic. The conditions change. And so during the time of construction, we would want a snapshot of where, what the conditions are as far as the contamination, how deep, and make sure that any dewatering activities or constructions of stormwater systems are not going to interfere with this process.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Gersonberger has some additional information.
Mr. Chair, just to follow up with what Mr. Brown brought up, can certainly think of some examples with the county MCAT facility and some of the other developments in this general area as far as some best management practices is that have been implemented considering the plume. Some of those include, as Rob had brought up, shallow excavations in lieu of typical deeper excavations, especially for the stormwater facilities, since typically the stormwater facilities are excavated out as predominantly the fill source of fill material for proposed development. So as part of those best management practices, the SWIFTMUD or D E P would require that the stormwater facilities not be dug as deep as they typically would be to be shallower excavations and for the excavation work to occur during the dry season instead of during the summer rainy season. As far as what you had also brought up, there certainly would be concerns about any excavation that would occur as far as, excuse me, as far as excavation that would occur for installation of the sanitary sewer lines, the gravity sanitary sewer lines, as those can, depending on the project, can become rather deep, and also the depth of the wet well associated with any type of lift station facilities.
Very good. I think just understanding the potential impact of doing something like that and then providing mitigating measures, I think that would be important, just so everybody's cognizant that there is a responsible entity, and it's not presumed that the Water Management District's going to enforce dewatering for the lift station or something similar to that. I think it would be important, so.
Mr. Rob? Mr. Chair?
One moment, Mr. Etlidge. Mr. Rob?
My concern here is twofold. A, has this ever been designated by the United States government as a brownfield?
I don't believe it's been designated as a brownfield because, again, Lockheed Martin had taken responsibility and is doing, is conducting the remediation.
Okay. Second, besides Lockheed Martin, is there a federal county, state agency who has the ultimate responsibility to see that this property is properly monitored and things that will happen in the future will be concurrent with what is current proper systems?
Yes, Florida Department of Environmental Protection has taken, under its Chapter 62780, cleanup of contaminated sites, is the state authority overseeing the remediation.
Okay, so if I was buying this property, and Lockheed Martin sent me a letter and said, "All is wonderful. We're moving along. It'll take us another 20 years to clean it, but eventually you'll be fine," would I then go to the state and make sure that that was true?
And that's perfectly fine. The state requires annual reports on their progress, on their treatment process. The state requires annual reports on their progress, on their treatment process. Again, the zone of influence changes as time goes by, and if new property owners are affected, they are required by law to notify those new property owners. So, it's a very dynamic system, but it is, you know, it's under the state control and Lockheed Martin has been delegated under this. And again, the 62780 process is really set up for contamination that leaves the responsible party's property line. Basically, it's there to identify contamination that leaves their site and requires them to mitigate and remediate those conditions from properties that are beyond their boundaries.
How long has the mitigation been going on on this property?
How long is, excuse me?
How long has the mitigation been going on on this?
The actual, I believe the actual permit for the treatment system was done in 2009, the approval of the treatment system. Again, there were pilot projects done to look at the most effective, cost-effective and efficient way to treat the contaminants of concern that are there. The approval was, I believe, in 2009, and they've been running the system actively since then with an annual report and update.
When was the last, call it an aerial, of the entire site showing the various plumes done, do you know?
They do the reports, this last report that I have was September 18 to August 2019, so they're in the process of processing this next annual report now.
That was of this year, September?
September 2019. They do it on an annual basis, so October 1, 2019, to, you know, September of this year is going to be their next report, so we'll be waiting for their next report.
Thank you.
You're mentioning annual reports, but monitoring is...
Oh, monitoring's constant.
Okay. I just want to make sure that they don't wait till...
But they're required by law to do, or this agreement that they have with FDIP to do an annual progress report on an annual basis.
So, they're collecting data continuously, maybe not, maybe weekly, monthly, I don't know. You may have a better understanding of how they collect the data, but then the reporting of it, it's collected and then the annual report, the data collected over the previous year's report.
Correct. I've got, you know, reams and reams of profiles, and again, it gets very complicated. You know, you're looking at, it was mentioned, the superficial aquifer, there's the upper and the lower superficial, there's the AF zone and intermediate and so forth, and they have to profile each one of those and each contaminative concern. It looks like blobs, you know, because they're all, they're all different contours, but they have, again, that extensive network of monitoring wells. Each site has a monitor well in the superficial, intermediate, you know, so there's a cluster of monitor wells that looking at all the different zones at a particular site. So, yeah, it's very intensive monitoring and remediation process.
Very good. Thank you. I think it's, again, this is, the source of contamination is outside the site and this applicant doesn't control that, but I think it's important to understand how this potential project could affect what occurred on, from the neighbor's actions. I think it's very helpful and understanding, but I believe, Mr. Rutledge, did you have a question?
I did, sir. Mr. Brown, I guess I would like to know, do you have, kind of conveniently, the parts per million that the heavy or the sinkers were at the beginning and what they are currently, and are the floaters as described, one that are affected and aerated so that going above and the general process, like some of the gas lubricants and so forth that are there, sometimes mitigate over time as oxidationation occurs? So, could you describe the two different products that are in the system, and then can you tell me what the parts per million were to start with and where they are today, what the timeline for success is, or what the level of acceptability is?
I probably can't tell you what the initial concentrations were, I believe, and again, the contaminants of concern right now are, you know, 1-4, 1-1 dichloroethylene, 1-1 dichloroethylene, cis-1-2 dichloroethylene, and 1-4 dioxane are the main contaminants of concern right now. I believe in the report, there is a, let me see if I can find it, chart over time showing the concentrations...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Rock?
To clarify this quickly, there is nothing that we know of currently in the environment by DEP that would prevent us from having anything built there. Would that be correct?
The question again?
Is there anything from DEP that would restrict the development of this property?
Not to my knowledge, because there hasn't been any restrictions for other activities going in that area. Just...
As, I know you were looking for some information from Mr. Rutledge, but as I understand it, this is an acknowledgement that there's a potential issue and there's a representation of mitigating factors or mitigating efforts that would allow for the development if they're done properly.
Correct. I mean, there's nothing, yeah, there's, again, the real issue is there's nothing that, you know, affects surface development. Subsurface, like I said, can be mitigated through, you know, the review of, you know, like I said, the stormwater retention system, the, any dewatering for any other infrastructure. Like I said, at the time of those activities, the most recent information should be obtained from Lockheed Martin as to what the conditions are at that particular area, because, again, the series of networks that they have, they're pretty, have a pretty good idea of what we could encounter during those phases. So, it could be mitigated, for sure. So, just to give you an idea, these are the contaminants of concern over time.
What's the timescale, please?
November 2011 to July 2019.
So, roughly eight years represented.
Correct. And you can see that, you know, a general decrease, and again, this is due to their treatment system. Each line represents a different contaminative of concern, and just for scale, it's a log scale, so.
10 micrograms per liter, and that's about 500 micrograms per liter.
Okay.
So, those are the concentrations started at that time and where we are today. So, and again, this is what they have to demonstrate to FDIP, that the treatment system is working, they do efficiencies at the plant. Again, they're monitoring consistently when they have to do the discharge, it's either back to groundwater or to our wastewater treatment plant. All of that is a constant evaluation.
Okay. All right. Very good. Mr. Rutledge, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think that's very helpful, and I think, you know, the only concern I have is that the, my experience sometimes with groundwater that are contaminated with more typically gas station and dry cleaners and stuff like that, but they're basically solvents, is that there is an impact when you have a natural rain event, and my concern a little bit is how the water flow off the property might impact a particular area where there's contaminants. But, you know, I think those are all, like, it could happen, but I'm not going to worry about that. If we've got somebody monitoring, somebody's paying for it and there's progress, I don't know that we could do more, and I don't, like you said, think it affects the location. I do, I do think as a public servant, we want to know that, is when we're looking at this stuff, that we've asked about this and we're comfortable, at least there's some progress, and I feel good about that. And again, I don't know that definitely impacts this particular site and in fact probably doesn't, so. I appreciate the effort, Mr. Brown.
And again, the idea is to look at the, to look at those fringes, those outside boundaries of the contamination, and actually, they're actively drawing it in. They're, you know, so it's not spreading anymore. We know that for a fact. It's actually, you know, reducing inside, it's actually being brought into a central, you know, point where it can be collected and treated. So, well, that was one of the main things, we wanted to make sure that it wasn't expanding anymore. Now, you'll get fringes here and there where, you know, maybe a partial of the plume would break off or, you know, but over the, again, the last 10, 12 years, it's been very consistent as far as the reduction of the plume and the reduction of the areas that are being impacted.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any additional questions for Mr. Brown or staff?
Yeah, I have for staff, but not for Mr. Brown.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Rock.
Mr. Gollan, good morning. How are you this morning?
Fine, sir.
Can you tell me what the level of service is on Talavas from 301 heading west of 15th Street?
Talavas is D.
D?
D, sir. Yes.
So, we know with the, when the site improvements come in or the plan comes in to develop the property, and the applicant's required to make improvements to that portion of the road it's impacted, would we require, based on the traffic count, a signalized light at their entrance and exit of their property onto Talavas? I travel Talavas all the time, and it's a, between that stretch between 301 and 15th Street is heavily traveled, I mean, heavily traveled by industrial trucks, lawn trucks, cement trucks, all kinds of stuff. So, would we require them to put a signalized light in, or would that be reviewed at the time that you have to go through the site plan development with them?
That is part of the final site plan process, the identification of the impacts and the mitigation of them, and the traffic signal could be one of them.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Any additional questions for the applicant? Okay. Very good. We're going to go ahead and open it up for public comments. I have two speaker cards. I'll call those and then open it up for anybody else who wishes to come forward. The first speaker card I have is Brett Paven. If you could, please come forward, state your name and that you have been sworn.
My name is Brett Paven. I'm an attorney representing several landowners in the community. I have written testimony and I have all their names and addresses available there, but I can read them into the record if you wish.
That's fine. Typically, if you're speaking for a group, you get more time. We've allowed the applicant to go over the time limit, so I'm not going to restrict any comments, but if you do have information, could you please provide it to the clerk? I do have on your speaker card names, but we're more interested in hearing the information you have as to...
Okay. Well, actually, the other speaker is my wife-in-law partner, and we had not planned on it, but we have some very relevant information to the contamination, and I think a lot of it is either misunderstood or has been misrepresented here this morning on how successful it's been. So, I was going to ask if you could talk about that first, and I have, I have slides of the maps and how the plume has been extending onto this property instead of, you know, shrinking in.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
If I could just...
Yes, ma'am.
...make one comment before he starts. Just so the planning commission knows, the jurisdiction is reviewing consistently the concept plan in LDC. You're not in a environmental review body, so you have no jurisdiction over this plume situation. The applicant chooses, I mean, if the citizen chooses to use their time to discuss that, that's their prerogative.
Right.
But we can't interregulate in the plume at this point.
And also, I understand that they can't do a presentation. They can provide information for the record. They can provide whatever they wish for the record.
Correct. But all jurisdiction's limited to concept plan in LDC.
Yes, ma'am. So, I would, I would try to summarize your information that you have and more importantly, state your concerns, so when this does go to the board that we've had an opportunity to vet, at least vet your concerns.
Well, I'm going to let...
All right. I don't know how that works, so if you could, go ahead. I do have your speaker card, so if you could, please come forward, state your name and you have been sworn, please provide whatever concerns or statements or whatever information you think is relevant and pertinent to the hearing here, and we'll consider it. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you very much. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you for giving us the time to speak today. We really appreciate the planning commission.
Your name and you have been sworn.
Yep. My name is Jeannie Sokovich-Paven. I have been sworn.
Thank you.
I do have a speaker card in there. As my partner indicated, we represent both the community group, that I'm sure many of you are familiar with, Focus, Family Oriented Community United Strong, Inc., which is the community group that has represented the citizens in Talavas for, throughout the history of Talavas. In addition, we represent a number of individual property owners, including those that directly abut this property. And so, we were kind of dividing our testimony, for me to focus on testimony on behalf of the nonprofit and he to focus more on individual property owners, although, of course, there is overlap and we were attempting to not be redundant. I think, though, that this meeting this morning has kind of evolved, and to be honest, it's evolved in a very good way. The thing that I want to say to you, all of you, as planning commissioners, is you are asking the right questions. This is not, despite how many times Mr. Grimes said it, a simple rezone, and that is fundamentally the problem here. You have been given incomplete facts with which to make your decision and inaccurate facts with which to make your decision. So, because the commission on their own recognized the importance of understanding how the contamination in this community affects this project, we will share with you some information, but we can tell you anything that you want to know, because I have been representing this community since 2005 and was the lawyer personally responsible for getting DEP to reject the first three cleanup plants, and we continue to follow the contamination. There is an annual report, and that chart that Mr. Brown showed you may actually be in the chart, but the only thing that chart shows you is that, guess what? We've been pumping tons and tons and tons of water and we've gotten some of the contamination. So, of course, we would expect to see a downward trend if they spent that much time and money developing a cleanup system, but that tells you as a whole. What it doesn't show you is that the plume has actually grown in certain aquifers beyond the capture zone. So, what that means is the system there that's cleaning up the contamination was not designed to reach the extent of the contamination, and guess what? It's on this property. DEP's own maps, Lockheed's own reports demonstrate that the plume in the upper superficial aquifer system, the one closest to land, exceeds the capture zone for 1-4 dioxane in, on this actual property. So, these are valid concerns, and the big problem is that this is being tried to address as a simple rezone, but it would not do the community nor the county justice if you proceed in this bifurcated way without fully considering the issues that are to come. It would be irresponsible, which I think is what the planning commissioners are getting at when they keep asking these questions over and over. We can show you a plume map that compares the capture zone, these are from Lockheed's own plume maps, we have them right here if you would like to see them.
Well, what we would be more interested in is hearing how it's relevant to this application. So, I don't think anybody's taken opinion that there is no contamination. How does it affect, how do you presume that it affects this application?
Sure. So, first of all, implying that the contamination is not on this property is inaccurate. The contamination is in fact on this property in certain aquifer systems. In addition, it is on this property in the uppermost superficial aquifer system, and so many of you talked about deeper activity that has to take place to put in what they're visioning for the site. That will even get to deeper aquifers, but that very top aquifer can be easily disturbed in an area that has this type of soil, as many of you, I'm sure, are aware. So, there are concerns, even with things that you wouldn't necessarily think that you might have somewhere else. The second thing is that you asked Mr. Brown whether or not there were any type of restrictions. Although there may not be any restrictive covenants that are currently sitting, there have been building permit denials, there have been a requirement that people close wells in Talavas, and at different times, the... visioning for the site. That will even get to deeper aquifers, but that very top aquifer can be easily disturbed in an area that has this type of soil, as many of you, I'm sure, are aware. So, there are concerns, even with things that you wouldn't necessarily think that you might have somewhere else. The second thing is that you asked Mr. Brown whether or not there were any type of restrictions. Although there may not be any restrictive covenants that are currently sitting, there have been building permit denials. There have been a requirement that people close wells in Talavas. And at different times, the county represented...
Again, relevant to this property.
And that's what I'm saying, is that because those have happened, you don't know whether or not they could happen in this context as well. We know that there had been, since the plume has been being cleaned up, building permit denials. We also know that many wells were closed after the finding of the contamination, and it's been represented to the community, that the community could not put in new wells in the area. So, I think that, that if you are, if you're doing anything with this property, you are gonna have to go through this much more complicated process than you would if you were not, in fact, in the contamination zone. A couple of other things, though, is that it's also restricted because there is infrastructure on the site. Mr. Brown kind of touched on this, but then when you asked him if the site and what they wanted to do would be impacted at all, he said no. But that's not entirely true, because there is extraction infrastructure on this site itself. It is not just for monitoring. It's also for extraction. The other thing is, is that the monitoring is not done weekly. It's not done monthly. It's not even done every other month. In most instances, it's done annually, and in some instances, it's done as much as quarterly, but that would be the most frequent. So, the information and questions that you're asking, you're not getting the relevant answers to determine you to what level you need to be concerned about these issues. Again, we didn't come in here today expecting to talk that much about the contamination, but it is hard for us to sit in the audience and hear information be given to you that is not accurate. Numerous times, it was asked whether or not this was a brownfield. This is not a brownfield. It's being cleaned up pursuant to Global Rebecca, the Risk-Based Corrective Action in 62780. And it's not a brownfield, because once you are in an actual cleanup program, you can't be a brownfield. Now, there have been brownfields that have been successfully done on the, in the areas of neighborhoods near contamination. And in fact, Talavas has asked the county and the state many, many times to consider them for a brownfields program. And they have even drawn up plans that show how the residential could coexist with commercial and industrial uses in the community. And yet, they've had no responsiveness from anyone at the county or the state.
Again, I understand there are many issues off-site. You're not helping your case when you don't specifically address the property that we're talking about. This is the application before us, so...
Yeah. I'm not quite sure how I'm not talking about the site with all due deference, because what you're trying to do is to make a decision of what will go on the site, which my clients will have to live directly next to. And all of the impacts that come with them, which is interesting, because you sit here and say that light industrial requires no impacts. But then you talk about in concurrency, we expect to find impacts, but don't worry, they'll have to pay for them. So, if concurrency itself, to get it to concurrency, is gonna require impacts that impact the community, how can you say that this is, in fact, suitable for a light industrial, which requires all impacts to be maintained on site? So, again, the, the issue here as to whether or not this property should be rezoned is whether or not it's consistent with your law. Well, your law is the Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan. But we've spent most of the day talking about this is just a straight rezone, when your Land Development Code specifically provides for you to take additional measures which considers site development plans along with rezoning considerations to address exactly these types of issues. But the county has chosen to proceed as though this is, in fact, a simple rezone and not begin to scratch the surface on those issues, just getting enough to pacify yourselves to move on and bifurcate the process to a later decision. And that is irresponsible. So, my partner is gonna talk about a number of other issues. I'm gonna move on from the contamination, because it seems that although I'm answering the questions directly asked by all of you, and there's about 20 more of them, which were either not answered or misrepresented to you, and I could answer every single one of them for you, it seems that that's not what you want to hear right now. So, we'll put that on the record. When I conclude, if people have questions, I'll come back to them. But here's the other issue. Just like what's coming up here in the context of the contamination, this entire rezone is based on faulty zoning information. The county's records demonstrate that this property is not, in fact, zoned currently as light industrial, light manufacturing, heavy manufacturing in A1. The county's own records document that that northwest portion of this property remains in a residential zoning designation. Again, too fast, too quick, too simple to stop and recognize that your own records demonstrate that that is not a consistent representation of the zoning. We have filed our testimony with you and written, and it has been emailed. So, although you may not have seen it before the meeting, you should see it now. And it details this very specifically. But three entities that I know of did public records requests with Manatee County. That included myself. That included another law firm in town called Moore Bowman. And it included the applicant. And every single one of us was told by the county that since the 1981 zoning atlas, there have been no rezonings on this subject property. They can find none. And you can pull up your own website right now and look at your 1981 atlas, and it shows that the northwest portion of this property is still zoned residential. And I'm confident that that's the case, because my clients were shocked to hear that it had ever been rezoned as industrial, the ones who lived directly next to that portion of the property. So...
Can you please wrap up your comments? We've given extra time, but I think, I think we need relevant information. The zoning issue is relevant. I agree. So, are there additional relevant items to the application?
Clearly, the issue in the criteria has to do with how your property is zoned, as well as how your neighboring property is zoned. And it's being represented as though there is this buffer of industrial between the existing designations. But in fact, it's not. And the entire application evaluates its impacts based on an improper assumption that, in fact, that northwest corner is, in fact, light manufacturing, but it is not. It's still residential.
Understood. Understood. Yes. Is that, is that your last point?
Just that the applicant put a footnote in his application, which demonstrates that they also realize that the county's records don't support their designated zoning. It indicates very clearly, we can't find legal descriptions for which portion of our property is zoned as such. Every single one of you knows, if a zoning ordinance was passed, it would have a legal description. There's no legal description, because no zoning ordinance was passed. But even though I brought this to the county's attention, nobody has seemed interested in exploring this further. Again, too far, too fast. This project needs to slow down and take into account its impacts to the community, and for you all to be sure what it is you're actually voting on. But don't worry, they have a footnote in the application that says, we'll presume your approval means that whatever was whatever will now all be light industrial.
Very good. Thank you. And Mr. Paven, did, did you wish to make additional comments?
No, just a few.
All right. And again, please, relevant to the application that's before us.
Again, this is Brett Paven. I've been sworn.
Thank you.
Sorry. Masks and hearing aids. I'll just briefly touch on the couple, I'll try to limit my discussion to two topics. The first being is how the residential areas in this, next to this property are just, you know, kindly dismissed throughout the application. You know, they refer to it that this community is a relatively small area with residential zoning, very limited residential usage to the northwest, and limited residencies in the area surrounding the subject property. And that such uses are currently, such residential uses are currently located adjacent to the property zone for heavy manufacturing and light manufacturing. I mean, if there is properties abutting, it's, it's a few parcels. It's not the entire community. And although some of those areas are zoned, they're, have yet to be developed. So, once those are developed, you know, it's still, they'll have more impacts to the community later when buildings do, do come next door. As for the, the traffic study, I think I drew some improper conclusions in the written testimony I submitted earlier on September 10th. But just so you know, any traffic improvements to Talavas Road, which currently has an LOS rating of D, well, it's, Talavas Road is identified in the comp plan to have a right-of-way of 120 feet. Currently, the road width right-of-way is 50 feet. So, any expansion of this road will actually require the removal of a number of houses, because there's several houses and buildings that are less than 50 feet from the center line of the existing road. And the, as for the traffic impact statement, the, the density actually examined, instead of the maximum allowable far of 9.8 million, they examined the impacts of 1.5 million, which is only 16% of the maximum allowable development on this area. And I know not all of it will be developed, but it's a, it's a really small number to make these projections. And also, these, the study used data from 2017 traffic counts. And when they use data that's more than a year old, according to the Manatee County Traffic Guidance, they're supposed to develop growth trends, and there's no growth trends in the report. But fortunately, there are a number of readily available traffic counts for the area that have demonstrated growth. And since 2017, the growth in traffic on these roads has increased by between 2.8 and over 28%. And that was not considered in the analysis either. And combined, you know, it's just combined, you know, a lot of these things might seem minor, but combined, they're, will have a very significant impact on this community. That's been there since pretty much post-Civil War. I have the traffic counts and a spreadsheet of different information and exhibits and copies of emails, communications that I'd like to submit. I had emailed a copy of these in, but I have a couple of hard copies.
If they've already been provided to the clerk, is that what you're saying?
Well, I would like, can I provide them?
Yes, yes. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Again, I, I think the community's biggest concern here is just the what-ifs. I mean, they've been in situations where developers have had plans for property in the area and got it rezoned. And instead of a Starbucks and a restaurant at the corner, they got the bus depot. Because once it's rezoned, light manufacturing, they can pretty much do whatever they want. And I'm not saying that's the intent, but right now, that is all the, that's what it is. It's just the applicant's intent. And this is a significantly large property, and they're really only talking about the first 55 acres of it. But without a site plan, you know, residents just don't know what's gonna be next to them. And they know that there are highly impactful uses that could be allowed under light manufacturing. And so, I, you know, more information would be appreciated. And I know that they haven't submitted a site, site plan, but we were told in their community meeting that they plan to break ground before the end of the year. So, that's, they must have some idea of more concrete plans than what they have presented. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Those were the two speaker cards I have. Are there, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to come forward and make a comment? Anyone at all? Okay. Seeing no one else come forward, we're gonna close the public comment portion of the hearing. And I, I do have a, just a couple of questions of staff. Mr. Galliano, regarding the, the traffic impact statement that was provided for the, with the zoning application, is that consistent with the county's standards?
Yes, sir. The traffic impact statement that has been submitted complies with the standards the county has. And let me explain essentially, in general terms, what this is about. The traffic impact statement uses information from May 2020. Planning, transportation planning is a dynamic activity. And this is a, say, photograph of the conditions that we have in our system at the day they submitted the traffic study. At that day, we use the, the traffic counts as Mr. Paven said, we use the traffic count from 2017. And this is essentially because we are one year behind of the traffic count. It means we, we count every, every year, but we update our traffic counts on, on our database every two years due to the complexity and the intensity of the work. In this case, it means for September 2020, we updated the traffic counts, and we have 2019 traffic counts in the database, in the concurrency reservation system. We updated not only the traffic counts, but also the reserved trips. Reserved trips are approved trips, but not billed. It means every time when some development has been approved, the number of trips has been registered on the database, but they are not part of the traffic count, of the current traffic flow. And that is what builds the data. The existing traffic counts plus what has been approved but not billed. That is what we say, but non-traffic. That is one of the things. The other, the other thing is the land use. We use the most probable intensity of the land use. And let me put an example. With this area, it would be possible in paper to build about 200 Wal-Mart Publix of 50,000 square feet. Nobody, there are no such facility on the world. It means this is, this is not feasible. This is, this is, it can be on paper, but this is not applicable. Same happened with fast food. We can use 50,000 fast food as the maximum, but there are no facility on the world that is so big to, to be fast food because of the nature of the business. Exactly the same happens with, with industrial. It means you can imagine an, an area with 9 million of a square feet, which will be equal of 20, 200 Publix in area as light manufacturing. That is the reason we use the most probable land use, the intensity of land use for the traffic study. Regarding the, regarding the COVID conditions, nobody in the nation is accepting traffic counts during COVID circumstances. The traffic reduce in, we feel about 40% in Manatee County. And, and nobody, and not only in Manatee County, nationwide, nobody count in during the COVID period, because the traffic is absolutely abnormal.
Thank you for that explanation. That, that makes sense. We're presuming. Yes, ma'am.
I did have one question to follow up. So, the staff report on page 11 states, the applicant is seeking a rezone approval at this time. They cannot obtain transportation concurrency until Plume Site Plan or File Site Plan View stage. At that time, the applicant will be required to submit a traffic study, determine if any off-site concurrency-related improvements are required to mitigate the development's impacts. So, this stage in W process, we're not talking about four-laning Talavas Road. Is that correct?
That is correct. It means no traffic study has been, no impacts of site-related project has been identified on the roadway network.
Right.
And that is the reason we cannot speak about any mitigation strategy, because we don't know the impacts.
Yeah, you took my question.
That's all I have.
So, with the rezone, we have a traffic impact statement. So, there's an expectation there's gonna be a transportation analysis submitted with the final site plan that is more detailed and, and specific to those uses, right?
That is correct. The purpose of the rezone is to evaluate the suitability in terms of transportation of the project on their worst... the project under worst conditions, worst scenario. And again, this is the most probable, factible scenario.
To be clear, it's the most intensive?
Most possible intensive, yes.
Okay.
Worst scenario, yes.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Rutledge.
Yeah, so I want, and listen, I appreciate very much the public comment. And I am sensitive very much to the difficulty and the programmatic approach that is taken in regards to environmental conditions. And so I just would like to say to the representatives that I think we're all very concerned about it. I would also say that we, as a board, raise the issue, and we want the best possible solution for all parties involved. And that does not mitigate the solution for the proposed change, and it does not diminish the consideration for the residents. But I do think it's incumbent on you, if I may, to communicate that in writing to the staff, because our staff, I think, is excellent. And I don't think the staff has any intention to misrepresent, which I really, I'm disappointed to hear you say that, because I don't think that's the intent. Now, if we make a mistake, that's something else. But I think your questions about zoning, your commentary about the plume expanding, when our team seems to think that's not the case, ought to be put in writing to them and then communicated so that the commission, when they hear this, can then make a decision with clarity. Because I do think sometimes communicating, we get our sensitivity high and our clarity maybe a little less. So I think your questions are very important. I don't think if there is important things we should do on this approval, that we're trying to not do those and not be aware of them. But I think the level of communication on some of that detail has to go to people that are experts. And so I would like you to communicate in length and in detail to our team members, because I see them as a team, and I think they're your community protectors, to communicate that. And so that's what I would like to at least put on the record and have you consider. Because I have to say, I don't have the reports. I studied some of these reports for years on properties I was involved with. They're frustrating, they're difficult, and it's a very unique specialty. So that, I just wanted to make that point, because I do think you're entitled to your protection as well, as this landowner is entitled to exercise their rights.
Very good, and appreciate the comments, Mr. Rutledge. And with that, we're going to go ahead and call a recess until 11 o'clock. And we'll convene and then take additional questions to staff and then to the applicant. So we're going to call a recess till 11:00.
Collect some insurance money.
All right, if you could, make your ways back to your seats, and we'll go ahead and reconvene the meeting. So I believe we were at the point where we had some questions for staff. And Mr. Galliano, just to follow up on what was said right before we took a break, is it, it's clear that there, I mean, it's, could you clarify that there are actually two, at least two different kinds of analyses that are provided in these processes typically?
Yes, sir. Let me clarify a little bit more about the reason we are here. We are here essentially for a rezon. And again, in transportation planning, a rezon requires a traffic impact statement, which is a three-page document that evaluates the suitability of the project with respect to the roadway network. That's it. It doesn't have any deepness in the analysis regarding transportation planning. And I need to clarify, because there are different types of analysis. When this is about concurrency, when this is about a final site plan, and when this is about a construction plan, a different type of traffic studies needed. The deepness is, of course, one of the topics that we handle on the traffic impact analysis. Usually, a traffic impact analysis evaluates with clarity and identifies with clarity the impacts that the project, the side-related traffic creates on the mobility system. And I say mobility because there are also possibilities for pedestrian and bicycles and transit. Once the impacts have been identified, the same analysis, the same study identifies the mitigation strategies, which could be, like Mr. Ram asked, a new lane, widening the lane, a traffic signal, or a roundabout, or perhaps a sidewalk, or a bus stop, depending on the type of impacts. Any traffic impact analysis contains also an operational analysis. It means how the traffic will be worked and moves around the facility, and how will be the procedure in order to mitigate these impacts. Again, traffic impact statements at the rezon level, very high suitability on the roadway network, traffic impact analysis, very deep with operational analysis at traffic level to identify impacts and to establish mitigation strategies.
Very good, thank you. All right. Any follow-up questions for Mr. Galliano? Okay. Mr. DeLezline.
Yes, sir, I have one for staff. There was a question on whether there was residential zoning on this property.
Yes, who would be able to answer the question regarding the zoning on the property?
Mr. Chairman, Jake Beblor and Mr. Wenzel have information.
Okay, very good. So if you could, please clarify the zoning.
I'll defer to Mr. Wenzel, he's approaching the podium and has some maps to place on the overhead.
Very good.
Yep. Can you see it? I'm sorry. I just, I wanted to start with this map. This is what was in the staff report. This is the current zoning today. There were questions about when something was rezoned on the site, I think up in this corner here where the LM is. There were questions of when that was rezoned and established in LM, or as LM. Rob Wenzel, for the record, county staff, and I've been sworn.
Thank you. Sorry, I missed that.
So here's, if you can put the two together with like the match line. This is, these are maps that we found in our office from the '60s, 1960. This is, these are maps that we found in our office from the 60s, 1962, both of these maps. And up in the upper corner, Jake pointed out on the top one, I kind of highlighted it there, that's Zone M2. And back in the 60s, that was our heavy manufacturing district. So to us, this has been zoned manufacturing for many years. And I think with the inception of the code in 1990 and the comp plan in 89, they just carried forward with the zoning and the, with the future land use.
So the, when you said the, the code in 1990, that's when the land development code was adopted?
Yes.
The comprehensive plan was created in 1989?
Correct.
And reviewed by the state?
Correct.
Approved. And then from that, the county then created zonings that were consistent?
Correct.
With the future land uses?
I think that what happened was that zoning district just carried over. And if Jake can point down to along University Parkway, you can see where the railroad is, that was also M2 down there, I think I highlighted it. There were, that was the heavy manufacturing district that's still there today.
Okay.
So those zoning districts really haven't changed through the years. I just wanted to point that out and put that on record, that our maps from the 60s show that.
When was it identified as light manufacturing? Was that in 1990?
Well, I would guess 90, and because that's M2, I would think that they looked and said, oh, there's residential next door. And I don't know, I really haven't researched at that to find that. We've researched as much as we could, and this is what we've come up with, but I would guess that they said, oh, there's residential next door, let's not do heavy, let's do light.
And so what you're saying is they were both M2, and because the northern parcel was adjacent to residential, they said HM is not appropriate, but LM would be?
That's what I would, I would guess.
That's a presumption on your part.
Yes, that's a presumption.
That being said, have, has the zoning map been reviewed and adopted by the Board of County Commissioners?
The current zoning map?
The one that designated this as LM?
Back then, I would, I would guess it was. It's signed by people and it says, you know, Manatee County on it.
Okay. So with regard to that, is there any concern that, that the representation of light manufacturing is not appropriate?
No.
Is there, are there mechanisms other than rezones to create zoning districts or designate properties with zoning districts?
That don't have, well, to change the zoning district, you have to do a rezon. But like it's been stated throughout today, that, that future land use category has been IL for, since 1989.
Other than adopting, like when the, the code was adopted, the change in 1990?
Right, there's no other way other than doing a rezon.
So if, if zoning designation is deemed, I don't know what the right word is, archaic or no longer valid, like if you have a property zoned M2 somewhere in the county, not necessarily here, but that zoning is no longer recognized, but it, it was, was carried forward, how do you clarify that designation then?
From the, from 1960s to the 1990?
After 1990. If it's not, if it was a, a non-current zoning, or one that's not currently listed in the zoning designations?
Mm-hmm.
Do you, do you still have to go through a rezon?
I guess I'm not understanding your question.
We, yeah, we don't need any additional information on the record. So the, what I'm saying is if...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
You're getting in the weeds here.
I have a, I have a very specific question in my head.
These zonings are done by adoption of an ordinance, period.
That's, that's how it's done.
That's it.
There's no concern that it would have to go through a rezon process? That's what I'm trying to get to. That mechanism's not required.
Mr. Wenzel already answered the question, the rezones are done by adoption of an ordinance at a public hearing.
Mm-hmm, so.
That's it. That's the answer.
All right. All right, thank you very much. All right. Mr. DeLezline, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, all right. So, all right, any additional questions for staff? If you can't keep your comments to yourself, I'm going to ask you to leave, please. All right, thank you. Any additional questions for staff? All right, very good. So with that, we're going to go to staff closing comments, or I'm sorry, any questions for the applicant?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, staff closing comments? Okay, hearing none. Applicant rebuttal or closing comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I really appreciate all your questions and all the issues that you have been concerned with. I'm going to try to address a lot of the things that have come up. First and foremost, as to the, I want to address the issue of the plume. And the, the first thing I want to point out is that although it was stated by one of the speakers that we had misrepresented that the plume was not on our site, I wanted to make sure everybody remembers, I actually pointed out that it was on our site and gave you a letter that said it was in the lower part of the upper aquifer. So I, I don't like being accused of giving you all wrong information because I, I really try to give you all, everything as accurately as I can. But what I want to address about this for a minute is that whenever a developer buys a piece of property and goes forward with it, you know, we, they always do a phase one audit and then a phase two audit to find out if there are any issues with the land. And when you find something, you address it. You take care of it, you build in accordance with it, you do what's necessary. This is done all the time. You may find arsenic on the land. And when you find arsenic on the land, you work with the DEP, you work with your county here, and you develop in a way that it'll be safe. You may find a buried tank, a buried gas tank on the property. You address it. You work with the DEP, you work with whoever that is out there to take care of it. So the issue of, that there is an environmental issue on the site is not something new for people who are developing their property. You take it that way, you address it, and you work with it. In this instance, we are and will continue to work with Lockheed Martin, work with the DEP to assure that the various wells and things are protected or taken care of. We will take, we will work with all those same properties to assure that we develop consistent with environmental safety. And I want to make sure you understand, with these people coming in and buying into this situation, we have the same interest as everybody else, that this thing get cleaned up, because the plume is partly on our property. We want it cleaned up, we want to work with everyone. We are not going to do something contrary to the environmental laws that would cause any additional issues or problems with this. We can't, we won't, and we're not going to. So the real question is, under our comp plan, is LM zoning appropriate for this site? I mean, that's, that is the real question. Second thing I want to address, and Nelson, I had told Nelson before I got up here that I wanted to address this, and I'm going to say it again even though he explained it very clearly. Under our codes, when we do a rezoning, we do what's called a traffic impact statement. And I want to make sure everybody understands that is different than a traffic impact analysis. A statement is just basically saying, what kind of traffic will this place generally, potentially generate? And it is a planning tool that the county uses to see that now that we've rezoned, how are we going to look at things in the future? And that is what we did. And we did it as a, something that gives logical, practical information to the county. And it was worked with, with Nelson and his staff to assure that it was giving, it was being used as a good tool. And yes, technically, theoretically, you could have more development on this property, but we'd have to build up so high, we'd get into the airport zones, we'd have to, we couldn't have parking, we couldn't have stormwater, we, you know, so we do something that's practical, as very well explained by Nelson. As the final site plans come through, your code requires a traffic impact analysis to assure that we are meeting concurrency. And we will have to meet concurrency with these developments for water and sewer, for your waste removal, we have to meet it for parks and wrecks, we have to meet it for traffic. And we will have to go through that process. And if this project is causing impacts to any of those systems, this project will have to address it pursuant to your codes in order to go forward. And we will have to mitigate. And that is the process that this county has in place, that we have always followed, that we will follow, and will have to follow in this particular development. The, the zoning question, I want to make sure that is understood what we did, it was mentioned in the note, and how we have done this. We saw the same things that your county staff just talked about, other than, I didn't go back to the 60s, is that your, your maps adopted in 1990, your maps show this, a certain part of this property as LM, a certain part of it as Agriculture 1, A1, and a certain part of it as HM. We recognize those maps as the current zoning of the site. We believe, like Rob explained, that it's because it was just carried forward in 1990 when the new zoning maps were adopted. In 1989 is when we adopted the comprehensive plan. And that has land use categories outlined on it, which we showed you today, that have been there since 1989, including this site is designated for IL, IH. Going to get my, no, IL, IH, I got to get it right here. Designated for IL. Farther south, it's designated for IH. And so that is the current zoning. Now, what we have done is because we don't have a legal description of the zoning, because it was carried over, it was put on the map, it was there, we are, actually have a legal description that will zone the entire site to LM, so that there is no issue going forward, 20 years from now, someone saying, I don't have a legal description of the zoning of IL, of LM. And that LM is absolutely consistent with your comprehensive plan. And again, and I want to show you one of our maps that we had up, if we can find it, get them back. I want to stress that this county has done things to assure that light manufacturing, that clearly says, I read it to you out of the code, no adverse impacts to nearby or neighboring residential, must meet all of these various... I've been involved with a lot of developments over the years. We were talking about Lakewood Ranch, for example, where we have light manufacturing with the next project next to it being residential. I was involved with all of those approvals, as you know. And I want to point one out to you here. I got to, Kyle, you point. We, we need to get one of those microphones we can move with. Across US 301, you see that there is industrial, and that's actually designated heavy industrial, HM, if you see in the zoning map. And next to it, there's a railroad track, and immediately next to that, there's a residential development. I actually handled the zoning on that residential development. And it has all the protections. It is very similar to what we have on, just on our northeast corner, where we have a railroad track, northwest corner, where we have a railroad track, and then we have others. We have residential that has been very, very successful, as far as I know. Like I said, I was involved with getting the zoning, and all the houses went up and all of them sold. That is very similar to what we're looking at here. And the reason it's successful is because we have our protections in our comprehensive plan and in our code to assure that we can have light manufacturing, light manufacturing with no adverse impacts next to and association with residential. So in conclusion, we have chosen the light manufacturing, which is, as I said, basically the warehousing, the assembly, and those kind of, kinds of uses that are employment, job creators, that we think is something this county has directed in their comp plan that is appropriate for this area where we are near major roads, we're near the airport, we're in these overlay districts, we're in the urban core, and we ask that you recommend approval. Glad to answer any questions?
No questions, that was your closing statement.
That makes it even better.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up for discussion, deliberation. Any?
Mr. Chick.
Mr. Rutledge.
So I want to go through a couple of points, because I thought, I really think this is one of those that tests our, our staff, I think it tests our zoning policy, and I think it's a challenge for me. I mean, I, I look at this and think, I want to do the right thing. So when someone calls us up and says, we're not doing the right thing, I think one of the things I say immediately is, I want to know we're doing the right thing, I want our staff to come back and be 100% confident of what they've said, and that the allegation is just incorrect or unfortunately misguided. Okay, so I don't want us to be wrong. Now, there is some limitation, and I do think that after you get to be about 30 or 40 years later, it's a little late to argue the zoning conditions that were applied in 1990. So I do think there is some time limitation to everything. To the extent that the presentation has, has met the standards of the county, and I think they've represented it well, and it's difficult, you know, older properties with all the history that's on them and so forth have to be addressed. And I do think the conduct of environmental considerations our county is sensitive to because of the great water features we have between the Manatee River and the Gulf. So I don't think we're delinquent in that area, I just think we always have to be cognizant, which I think this, this particular group has represented that we need to be, and I'm, I'm okay with that. The other point I was going to make is that the ability to bring in a top 100 Fortune company to Manatee County has a far-reaching beneficial effects. Pinellas County, I do some significant work up in Pinellas, you cannot change a commercial industrial zoning back to anything else. So they are in such desperate need of industrial zoning to support the conduct of the people living there, that this is, you know, the, the most densely built-out county in the, in the state, 100% built-out. So their decision to do that should lead us to follow some pretty important thinking that industrial uses are critical to a healthy county. And so I, I appreciate all the challenges that were presented to us. I always am very confident in staff, and I would challenge you to be ready, because I don't think we want our commissioners having to look down the barrel of these questions and not have very strong answers, and I think you do. So I'm going to be in support of this for a lot of reasons. I do appreciate when people come and make us do our best work. So thanks for those that came today and spoke, and thanks to the team and to you, Mr. Chairman, thanks.
Very good, thank you. And with regard to maybe concerns that somebody, there may be accusations that staff didn't do it, I'd like to give the, anybody who makes a comment like that the benefit of the doubt, that maybe there's just an expression that there's an element being questioned, not that they're proposing that staff didn't do their job. I think that needs to be clear. You know, everybody's put a lot of effort into this, we'll again, give the benefit of the doubt that it's just the result of a question, it's the form that the question's been asked in. But I agree with you that the, this area seems to be most appropriate for industrial types of uses. We have the rail, the rail system adjacent, the airport adjacent, and a state highway nearby that's been contemplated as industrial uses, at least since 1989, when the modern comprehensive plan was adopted. And this just seems to be a continuation of the process that was begun many years ago. So again, I, I would encourage staff to have some information regarding mitigation of the concerns related to the plume that's on the property for the board, that, that I presume is going to be a topic of discussion. And even though there, the process may not, not allow it, there might be things that the... And this just seems to be a continuation of the process that was begun many years ago. So again, I would encourage staff to have some information regarding mitigation of the concerns related to the plume that's on the property for the board, that I presume is going to be a topic of discussion. And even though the process may not allow it, there might be things that the applicant could proffer to address some of those current concerns before they're actually.
Well, Mr. Chair, let's just be clear, there are no stipulations attached to this application. There will be no proffer on the plume at the hearing.
I know that, but staff, the applicant can make a statement, can they not?
It's up to them. We don't direct the applicant on the statements.
No, I realize that. Again, I still think it would be something that needs to be addressed at the board hearing. But with that, I'll consider any other deliberation or entertainment.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Mr. Roth.
Based upon the evidence, based upon the staff report, evidence presented, comments made at the public hearing, and find their request to be consistent with the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan, the Manatee County Land Development Code, I move to recommend adoption of Manatee County Zoning Ordinance Number Z 2010, as recommended by staff.
Second, we have a motion by Mr. Roth, second by Mr. Roth. Is there any discussion or deliberation? Hearing none, the chair is going to call the vote by roll. Mr. Heap.
Aye.
Mr. Roth.
Aye.
Mr. Smock.
Aye.
Mr. DeLezline.
Aye.
Mr. Rowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rutledge.
Aye.
Very good. Chair votes aye, motion passes 7-0. Is there any additional business for today? Okay, all right. We're going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you.[694.19]
Let us pray. Gracious God, we give you thanks for abiding with us and caring for us in the midst of these unprecedented circumstances due to COVID-19. You, O God, walk with us and lead us along paths of uncertainty. You, O God, open doors of opportunity. You, O God, encourage and comfort our hearts. You, O God, know the needs of this city, and you know our blessings as well. We ask now for a sharing of your power and the Holy Spirit, so that these council persons may move confidently in this meeting, and may they boldly employ every gift and every resource at their disposal to address the challenges of our day and our times. May our gathering today be marked by patience, careful listening, and a deep and abiding respect and affection for all of the people whom they serve and represent. We invite you, O God, to be present with us today. Please hear our prayer, for it is given in your name. Amen and amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Call the meeting to order. Mr. Yallow has an excused absence this morning. Ms. Bochamp?
Good morning. We have no proclamations this morning. We do have presentation by the Bradenton Police Department and Florida Contraband Forfeiture
Good morning.
Good morning.
Not that every time I show up here is not my favorite day of the week. This particularly so because we get to give away money to organizations within our community or who impact our community who really need it. And this is one of those days for us that I think we truly show our community connection, both as an agency and as a city. As you know, this is our third year since we formalized the program. That I also have Lisa Reader up here. She is actually my program administrator, and I know she works very hard on this. I like to brag each time I get up here that per the state requirements, we need to give away 25% of what we bring in. That would have equaled this year about $3,700. What I'm pleased to tell you is that with the donations that we're going to be making to these nonprofits today, along with donations that we make throughout the year, we're sitting at $21,000. You all can do the math. We do more than we're required to do, but I think there's an obligation on our part to do all that we can, and so I'm pleased to do that. I'm going to call up each organization one by one, and we're going to present the check. We're going to take a picture. If you all want to make any comments at any point, feel free to interrupt me. I know some of you all recommended some of these agencies apply for these funds, and I appreciate you doing that, Councilwoman Barnaby. I know you did. So I appreciate that. So the first person we're going to call up is the Boys and Girls Club of Manatee County. They are getting the check today for $600. I'm going to have Dawn come up. The grant funding will be used to reward club members for completing drug prevention programming, improving academics, good behavior, and citizenship. The fund will help create an evening of community engagement between members of BPD. I'm looking forward to that, by the way. Club members and families of the Boys and Girls Club located at Rogers Garden Elementary School. Dawn, if you want to say a couple words.
Good morning. I want to thank you all so much for your support of the Boys and Girls Club. We have had such a longstanding, wonderful relationship, and these times are very challenging for everyone, and not just because of COVID. And so we are very blessed to have you in our lives to promote citizenship with our children, good community support, and relationship building. We want them to make the best choices possible for themselves, and part of that is having a positive relationship with our police force. And they really do go above and beyond. It's not just about having a one-time event. They're there throughout the year, not just at Rogers Garden, but at multiple Boys and Girls Club locations. And for some of the kids that we serve, it may be the only time they see the police in something that's a positive environment versus things they may be challenged with at home. And so we want them to see them as an ally, as we do, and to build that trust and respect for each other, and we couldn't be more proud of this relationship. And thank you so much for the financial support as well.
It's my pleasure.
I'll give you a hug, but I can't.
Drug-free Manatee, $1,500. We provided them funding to educate employers and employees of the value of a healthy, unimpaired workforce by providing education, training, and public recognition of employers that participate in the drug-free workplace. This grant allows them to launch the Healthy Minds, Healthy Workplace Campaign. I'm really looking forward to hearing and seeing a little bit more about that. Is Linda here? Yes, Linda Thompson. There you are. So go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity as the new leader of Drug for Humanity. I have been amazed at being embraced by this community and all the exciting things we're going to do. Along with, this particular campaign is one that I've brought to the table to try to address a call from the county of Manatee to work with our young adults, 18 to 35, who are at very high risk of substance use, and also represent the Foundation for the Next Families in the community. And so what we're launching, and I'm looking forward to the support from the city and from Chamber of Commerce and from all of the community members, to kind of make a paradigm shift beyond preventing substance abuse for those that are vulnerable to that, but also transforming the community into one that responds to individuals as well. So the Healthy Minds, Healthy Workplace, we're going to start with this donation to pilot this year 50 businesses within the community to train them on things like how to create a healthy workplace, how to support their employees with healthy and social support, and also to train them on things like the use of Narcan and how to help their employees if their employees are struggling with substance use. So we're really excited to get this going and see what comes out of transformation. So thank you.
Replay Outreach, $2,000. The Success for Life Training Program is designed to encourage at-risk teens to uncover their unique purpose in life, learn to manage their behavior, and gain the necessary skills to be successful in the workplace, and result as a roadmap to their future. Larry Rose? Oh, and Vernon Kearney.
Yeah, ma'am.
Okay, sorry about that.
It's okay.
All right, go ahead.
How you guys doing today? First of all, I just want to say thank you for working alongside of us. Replay Outreach, we specialize in character building and leadership. We really believe in building up the kids, showing them the right traits, so they can get out into the community and be better citizens. You know, we like to take them on different types of field trips, expose them to different things to get them out of their comfort zone in order to let them see new horizons and things of that nature. With this money you guys are giving us, we're going to be able to do more field trips, do more activities, have more resources. So I just want to say thank you, and we truly appreciate you all.
Humane Society, Manatee County, $2,500. I know that this is your, I think their, third year receiving this. Provides a safe haven, routine care, medical assessment, care for animals removed from homes by BPD when cruelty and neglect charges are being investigated. That's a great organization. We always provide not only financial support, but also personnel. Rick Yoakum is here to say a few words.
Good morning. First, to Lisa, Chief Bevan, and the Bradenton Police Department, thank you for allowing me to be here this morning. To the council and mayor, we truly appreciate your continued support of the Humane Society of Manatee County and what we're trying to do. It's been an excruciatingly difficult time for everyone, but I can't think of a better community for support to work in than Bradenton and Manatee County. It's been absolutely amazing. We've operated every day since the pandemic started, albeit at a reduced capacity because we had staffing issues like everyone else. I'm proud to say that we now have a larger staff than when the pandemic started. We've expanded in our veterinary clinic by opening up our new dental surgical suite, which will double the capacity for us to do dentals. We purchased the property next to the veterinary clinic on 14th Street at 2407 and 2411, 14th Street, and that's for an expansion of shelter capabilities as well as an education center in the future that will be made available to anyone in the community in law enforcement, nonprofits, or animal welfare. So we've got a lot of plans. We're only able to do this because of the support that we receive from all of you that I mentioned when I first stepped up here. So on behalf of the Humane Society of Manatee County, thank you all very much.
Next, we have the Manatee County Girls Club, Just for Girls, $2,500. The club provides before and after-school programs, alternative education for disadvantaged and underserved girls ages 5 to 17. The Serve and Protect Project will provide a KidTrack system and secure database for identification, member photos, and student family records. This is a crucial component to keep the girls secure, protected, and accounted for. This is a very expensive program. We've actually been looking for somebody to spearhead this in our community because it was a little financially out of our reach, and I'm so pleased to see that they are diving in, and we're pleased to give them $2,500.
Good morning to Chief Bevan, Lisa, and their team, to the full council, Mayor Poston, Manatee Girls Club alum, this is Mary Ann. Again, my name is Drina Green. I am the program administrator for Just for Girls, and Just for Girls has been providing quality services to Manatee County for 51 years, and we are still as fully committed to doing that as when the journey began. Chief Bevan alluded to some of our demographics. I'm sure you know we're located geographically in three places, East Manatee, West Bradenton, and Palmetto, but we serve some of the county's highest at-risk populations, with 96% of our population being free and reduced recipients. 56% of those are single-parent-led by female households, and of those households, 64% earn less than $20,000 per year. So those families are what we classify as your Alice families or your working poor. So they are also at risk for academic, social, emotional, mental, adverse childhood experiences. So with this program, the support of this program, building sustainability and infrastructure for us, it allows us to build on our prevention programs of academics, behavior, and character, and be able to refine the data and analysis, and also offer additional services to those families. So without your help, we wouldn't be able to do so. So again, on behalf of our CEO, more than 500 families that we serve each year, we do thank you.
Thank you so much. New Manatee Broncos, $2,500. The Manatee Broncos is an organization for children, 5 to 14 years old, to play football, ages 4 to 14 for cheerleading. An estimated 90% of the children are from low-income families. Their motto is "God, Family, and School" because it is about more than just sports. They use sports to keep the kids off the streets, and the funds will be used to purchase proper safety equipment. This is another organization that not only do we provide financial support, but we try to really engage with the youth out there. Some of the leads on this, and I see some of them here. Yes, there they are, right in front of me. You may recognize from being employed here with the city of Bradenton, and so we're very pleased to provide them with a check. Charles, why don't you bring the whole gang down? Come on. We're filming it. Come on, Shimika.
Okay. Yeah, I'm the president of the New Manatee Broncos, and Charles is the vice president, and Shimika is our registrar. Like the chief said, they have from, this is our fifth year of being a program, and they have been awesome. She comes out, along with some other officers, and they speak with the kids. The kids get a positive interaction. They'll say, "When is the police lady coming back?" And I'm like, "That's the chief," you know? So it's a lot of fun, get to see them, get to interact with the police. We do have, we have each season about 200 kids that participate with us, and it takes a lot of time, effort, and dedication and money. And with the COVID this year, it's been really hard to get out there and fundraise the way we normally do, but we don't only enter at with the kids through football season. We go off-season to keep them busy because they are from low incomes. A lot of them don't have father figures. Some don't even have really good mothers, you know, that we expect as mothers. So we have to stay engaged. We have to stay with these kids, and it takes a lot of funding, and we appreciate everything that she has done for us throughout these five years.
We appreciate it.
Do you guys want to add anything?
That's it?
Of course.
I've never heard you say a last word, Charles.
Right?
Thank you. I know. Pace Center for Girls, $2,500. You all are very familiar with Pace. Provides girls and young women an opportunity for a better future through education, counseling, training, and advocacy. The girls are all at high risk of abusing drugs and alcohol and, on average, live in poverty. The New Growth and Change System is a behavior modification program built on the Pace mission of values and guiding principles. Do we have Amy here, please? Yes. Do what?
Good morning. Yes. Good morning. Thank you so much for having me. Every time I'm around here, I feel like I'm with friends, so I thank you so much for having Pace here today. So our Embrace, Growth, and Change System is really what we work with our girls on. A lot of times, people think about Pace and they think about school because we know education is the key to their future. But like many of us, I don't know, I'll throw it out there, maybe we have some coping mechanisms that we all use in our life that are maybe less than the best coping mechanisms we could have. I don't know, I could be making a leap of faith here. But our Embrace, Growth, and Change System is based upon our values and guiding principles. So one of the things that we say to girls when they come to Pace is now is the time to embrace growth and change. And it may be difficult, and we use those guiding principles as our staff as well because we have to make a lot of changes. We saw that when the pandemic started. Did we ever think we were going to be able to provide educational services as well as social services virtually? We had to really dig deep, and that's what we talk with our girls about, is how can we learn different coping mechanisms, not the ones that we've been counting on and using over the years, because we all go to those go-to responses, right? Good, bad, or ugly, sometimes we go to those coping mechanisms. So we work with our girls on understanding that there are different ways that we can cope, and that's what our Embrace, Growth, and Change System is going to be able to do. It's going to help us continue to work with our girls on making those better and those responsible decision-making skills so that they can be better members of our community. And being here today with all of you, there are lots of opportunities for me to feel bad about what is happening in the world today, and when I sit out here and I see all the good work that everyone is doing, and it just inspires me, and I'm so grateful to be here today. It's really the start of my day. Thank you. Why do I always smile with a mask on?
I know, right? You gotta take that, right? Last but not least, and I'm not going to say it's my favorite, but you can read between the lines, the Bradenton Police Explorer Post. The Explorer Post is designed for young adults ages 14 to 20 who have an interest in pursuing law enforcement. I'm sure you all understand and realize the value of a program like this, particularly now, we've got a lot of kids involved in this. I've got three of my representatives here. I want all three of them to come down. Quality Assurance Manager Valerie Knight, Sherry Nichols, and Sergeant Perry Merrill, who basically volunteer their time to administer the program. I'm not going to say anything more because I know they have a few things to say, so come on down. Oh, Officer Palat.
Officer Palat. Mr. Mayor, City Council, Ms. Lisa, and especially the chief, we'd like to thank you for giving us this money. A lot of other places you could have put this money, and you put it towards us, and we really appreciate it. The young people that we have in our organization are very dedicated and very special young people, so this money will help with the equipment, with training, and everything that we need to make this the best explorer program in the state is what our goal is. So thank you very much.
I think you all see a theme here that we really try to focus on the youth. I say time and time again when I'm up in front of people speaking that these are our future leaders. They're the ones who are going to be sitting in your chairs in really just a few years and making decisions that are going to impact all of us when we're sitting in our easy chairs in our homes. I will tell you that I think all of these organizations are incredibly worthwhile. This wasn't just an easy make-a-phone-call, fill-something-out. Lisa Reader tried to hurt everybody, a lot of paperwork involved, a lot of follow-up. We charted their progress during the year to make sure that they fulfill what they told us that they were going to do if they wouldn't be eligible for funding. Again, I'm just thrilled to be able to present this funding. We're going to excuse them now, and I'm going to want all of you all to go out into the big rotunda area right here. We're going to get a picture with everybody, but thanks to each and every one of you for approving this funding. We really appreciate it. So, and a final clap for all of you all.
Citizen comments will be accepted at this time on any consent agenda or non-agenda item. Comments will be accepted on public hearing items at appropriate time. Anyone who wishes to address the council on any agenda or non-agenda item? Anyone wish to speak to council? Anyone at all? Ms. Bochamp, do you have any phone calls or any?
We had no phone calls or voicemails in the city clerk's office.
Okay, great. Thank you. Ms. Bochamp, let's move it.
Next, we have the consent agenda. We're asking for approval of items A through I.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Ward two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. The vote is four to zero. Ms. Bochamp?
Under business, advertising, petitions, hearings, and communications, we have the first reading of Ordinance 3072. An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, amending Part I Charter and related laws, Subpart B related laws, Article IV Police Officers Retirement System of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bradenton, Florida. Amending Section I Definitions, amending Section II Membership, amending Section VII Pre-Retirement Death, amending Section VIII Disability, amending Section IX Vesting, amending Section 19 Domestic Relations Orders, Retiree-Directed Payments, Exemption From Execution, amending Section 27 Military Service Prior to Employment, amending Section 28 Prior Police Service, Providing for Severability of All Provisions, Providing for Codifications, Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict Here With, and Providing an Effective Date. Again, this is a first reading, so no vote is required today. We'll go ahead and set the second reading in public hearing for October 14th.
All right.
The next item we have is the second reading in public hearing of Ordinance 3068, a quasi-judicial item, so we will administer the oath at this time. Anyone wishing to address council during the following public hearing will stand and raise their right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations which you are about to present to the board will be truthful and accurate?
I do.
Thank you. We have an ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida vacating a portion of a 20-foot-wide alley as shown on the plat of Orange Park subdivision, recorded in Plat Book I, page 272 of the Public Records of Manatee County, Florida, being located generally west of 13th Street West at the intersection with 14th Avenue West. Providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Again, this is the second reading and a public hearing, and we'll be asking for a decision on this today.
Thank you. Good morning, Marshal McCrory, Planning and Community Development. I have a brief presentation if you would like, but I am available if otherwise. I think you're familiar with this location. It is the, known as the Manatee Insight, and there's a piece of platted alley that bisects that property. So this would vacate that, and it would cede the ownership to the new owner, who is in fact now Pearl Hunts Partnership 8, LLC. I'm available for questions if you have any.
Yeah, Marshal, I noticed the alley comes down and does a dog leg. If you know the property well, the road actually continues right straight to 14th, but there's a curb cut. Did that not need to be included?
This, you see what's mapped. What's being vacated is that that's highlighted in yellow here.
Right.
So it does not run on all the way out to 14th Street.
Okay, but there was at one point, because I know that everyone drives straight through there, you know, so it's, it looks like a dirt road, and then there's a curb cut there. So was that not ever really a?
There may have been a driveway there at some point.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a good chance that that may have been a driveway just for the residences that were there.
Okay, all right. Just checking.
Mr. Mayor, I grew up not too far from there, and that was a very interesting piece of property to begin with, and those teeny tiny little cottages, or whatever you want to call it, was on there. Actually, the historical park wanted to get one of them to be able to put at their park. But yes, there was like a dirt road that went through there. There wasn't, and we just, we need to vacate it.
Yep. Okay.
You have a question, Mr. Marshal? Marshal, thank you. Let's open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone in favor? Anyone in favor? Any opposition to this ordinance? Any opposition? Any opposition? Hearing none? Close public hearing. Chair will take a motion.
Move to approve Ordinance 3068 vacating the public right-of-way for the Manatee Insight.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve Ordinance 3068. More discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Ward three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Ordinance 3068 is approved. The vote is four to zero. Ms. Bochamp?
Under new business, we have the police chief with a body camera presentation.
Good morning again. As you know, we launched a couple months ago a T and E on body cameras. Today, I'm going to let Assistant Chief Kramer, who led that project, the management of that project, I'm going to have him come up and walk you through the program, walk you through what we perceive to be the expenses involved. We're not necessarily asking for a decision today if you need to mull it over, but, you know, the sooner the better, but don't feel compelled. This is really just an informative session for you to help you make your decision, so. Chief Kramer?
Thank you, ma'am. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members, and guests. Thank you for allowing me to report today on the identify the best products available for our officers while continuing to provide excellent customer service. We believe the camera-